Okay, if everybody's good with it, it is approximately or exactly 4:04 PM on July 10th, and we can get started officially with our meeting Board of Trustees for the Community Investment Trust.
Recording in progress.
Just want to take a moment to thank Brad and Anna for joining us today from their organization, Alpha Capital Management. We're going to engage in a good OCIO discussion with them. But before we move into that portion of the meeting, first item on agenda is public comment. So we want to take a moment to see if there's anyone with us from the public that would like to make a comment regarding any matters we're going to discuss today. Okay, hearing none, we will move forward with the approval of the minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? I think those minutes are on under the first section of the packet that should be in front of you. And I had an opportunity to review them, and everything seemed clear to me. And if no one has any thoughts or concerns about what's documented in them, can I get a motion to approve? So moved.
No second.
It's been properly seconded and been properly moved and seconded. I don't think we need to take a vote on the minutes, or do we?
All in favor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I do want to note that for that particular meeting, there was a technical error, so there is no audio recording of that meeting.
The minutes have been properly approved. Next item on the agenda is item number three, discussion with the OCIO search consultant. Again, Anna and Brad, I can see you now on the screen in front of me. Thank you all. First of all, congratulations, and thank you so much for being willing to work with us on this important effort. And, you know, we're looking forward to having a good conversation with you. We have a great group of board members here, and I'm sure they're going to have lots of good and insightful questions for you. So what I'll do is just turn it over to you for your presentation, and hopefully we can answer any specific questions you have for us. We embark on this journey together.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. We're excited to get started. Let me go ahead and do a share screen real quick, and we'll get rolling. Did you get, I sent the presentation out last week. Did you all get a copy of it?
I don't know that I recall seeing a copy of the presentation.
I don't either. See if we can get a...
Hello?
Seeing that.
Access.
I apologize if I missed that. Let's see.
I'll forward it to Craig for distribution.
But we can send it again after the meeting. So I just want to put it up on the screen now, and we'll get through it, and then...
Did y'all see it? Once I pull it up. So here it is right here. So it doesn't matter. We'll send it to you after the presentation, but I know it's hard to see small print. If y'all can see this okay? Is this good?
It's good.
Okay, great. Well, you don't have to have it in front of you. All right, so you know Anna and myself that run the firm. We always start with a timeline and kind of keep a very structured process going. So quickly to go through it, here we are now, what we call our explore meeting. And so one hour video conference for you all to really to kind of set the table on, you know, what you're looking at. We're going to do some education on fiduciary responsibilities as well as the OCIO market itself, and then go through the homework we went through, which is all anonymous, kind of get a aggregation of as a group what you guys think like, try to get you all on the same page. So here we are in the explore. The next phase, assuming that we only need one explore meeting, would be to us to start building an RFP as well as a list of candidates. And we'll talk about that for the latter part of the meeting. And then the RFP is set out, and the candidates get, industry standard is for them to get one month in order to complete that RFP, and then they send it back to us. And we get busy over about a three-week period, creating about a 30-page book, comparing all the candidates to each other. So it's, because what we get back is just hundreds and hundreds of pages. So we create an executive summary for you all, and then we'll have a next scheduled meeting will be a 90-minute Zoom meeting like this, which will go through all the candidates. Usually we have, you know, six to seven candidates. And then at that meeting, we narrow it down to three candidates. And then we have another quiet period for roughly three weeks where we get the itinerary set up for the finals, which will be at y'all's location. And three candidates will come in and present back-to-back-to-back. And then we'll help you make a decision on, you know, which candidate you want to form this partnership with and hire. So does that all make sense?
Yes.
It's about a three- or four-month process. I know meetings are tough in the summer, and so that's usually the hang-up. Certainly, three to four months is the most sufficient. We've had a drag out for COVID and hurricanes and all kinds of stuff. So, you know, we're here. We've already negotiated the fee, a flat fee. And so how long it takes, it takes. So without any other questions, we'll move forward. So here's what the goals are today. We're going to do it, Anna's going to do a fiduciary framework. I know several of you, you know, may be new to sitting over a big pool of money like this and the fiduciary responsibilities you have, so she's going to give her a refresher for, you know, people have done this before, people have not. Then we're going to walk through the different service models, and then talk about the OCIO industry and its evolution. And then we're going to go through the homework, these evaluation factors. And then finally, we're going to go through the project timeline, go through the next step, and talk about what that's going to look like. Any questions on our goals today? All right, I'm handing it off to Anna. She is a fiduciary machine, and let her back things up to, you know, before Christ time and go from there.
Thanks, Brad. Yeah, so as Brad mentioned, you know, everything really starts with a fiduciary framework, right? So what are your roles as the investment committee? And how do you fulfill your duties to the portfolio? And then how does the organization that we're going to help you find through this process help you discharge those duties properly? As Brad mentioned, I actually do take it back to ancient times. You know, fiduciary doesn't just sound like a Latin word. It actually is a Latin word. The Romans coigned it, and Cicero talked about this relationship between an agent and a principal, and it's in the Bible, and there's a whole long history of how you reconcile this idea of you're responsible for something. How do you make sure that you're following your responsibilities for that pool and not your own self-interests, right? Fortunately, there are more modern guidelines we can also look to. So it kind of starts in the '70s for your intensive purposes. You have right back-to-back, you had UPMFA in 1972, or UMF, I should say. That's updated in 2006 to UPMFA. So that's really for charitable funds, and you've got 1974 ERISA, really focused on the retirement plan side. So these are really establishing the modern framework for organizations like yourselves and how you discharge those duties. And then the next page, very simple, really boils down to two things. There's loyalty and there's care. So these twin fiduciary duties, this is all there is in some ways. And, you know, the duty of loyalty is relatively straightforward, right? You know, it's putting the interests of the portfolio ahead of all other interests, including your own. Care gets a little more tricky. We're going to talk about that on the next page. And, you know, some other things that you can follow to make sure you understand your fiduciary duty. There is UPMFA, so the Uniform Prudent Management Institutional Funds Act. So that establishes some guidelines. There's the Investment Advisors Act of 1940. If you hire a firm that's regulated by the SEC, they are going to also follow that as a fiduciary. There are state laws that may be applicable. So there's lots of different ways that you guys can make sure that you understand that. And on the next page, these are the seven guidelines. And then I mentioned, you know, number seven is loyalty, right? Avoiding or managing conflicts of interest and favor the portfolio. And all these other six on the page all have to do with discharging that duty of care. So what are those? Number one, knowing the standard provisions, right? That this idea of ignorance of the law is no excuse. You got to know, you know, what the regulatory, what the legal framework is that you're operating under. Number two, diversify your assets to a specific risk and return profile, which indicates that you need to know what your risk is, what risk tolerance you're willing to take with these assets, and then that kind of feeds into what your return profile would be. You don't have to know this right away. That's something that, you know, the investment firm that you hire is going to help the rest walk through that, figure out what the right risk profile for this fund is, figure out how to invest those assets. But that's number two. And then three, similarly, prepare an investment policy statement. So when you've got this kind of diversification framework, you know your risk tolerance, you know your return profile, it goes to the investment policy statement. And the investment policy statement is really the guidelines from here on out. It establishes the responsibilities, establishes, you know, what the firm you hire is supposed to do, what you guys are supposed to do, how you monitor it. It's super important guidelines. Again, you're not expected to kind of create this out of whole cloth. The firm that you work with will help you assess practices for an investment policy statement, help you guys draft that. You'll sign it, and that will become the framework under which this portfolio is managed. Number four, use prudent experts and document due diligence. So you don't have to be an investment expert to be a good committee member, but know what you don't know, and use outside firms as appropriate. So of course, we're going to help you document due diligence on hiring some sort of outside investment firm to help you guys with this, either a non-discretionary, someone who gives you advice, or discretionary, somebody who takes certain actions. That will be a prudent expert. And then they in turn are going to help you hire prudent experts to actually, you know, purchase securities, right? Should you buy Coke or Pepsi? They will hire prudent experts for that, and they will document that due diligence. So you're going to have your bases covered there, I think, both ways. Number five is controlling and accounting for investment expenses. So same idea here. When we go through our process with you all, we're going to get you competitive pricing intel on these services. And then on an ongoing basis, the firm that you hire is going to do the same for the next layer down, right? The people who are actually making the investment decisions in the portfolio, buying the securities. This can be as simple as, you know, once a year, there's a page in your quarterly report that has the fees you're paying to each of the managers, the fees you're paying to the investment firm, what you're paying for somebody to hold the assets, like a custody bank, and a total. And they should have good benchmarking data for you on how the fees for their investment managers that they're hiring or they're helping you hire really fall in the industry. Number six, monitoring the activities of prudent experts. So, you know, even if you hire an outsourced chief investment officer and you say, hey, you know, we want you to run the portfolio within this framework of the investment policy statement, you still have the responsibility to monitor them and to make sure that they're doing the job that they've been hired for. So are they following the contract? Are they following your investment policy statement? A lot of times when groups, you know, have been doing this framework where they have meetings and they get advice from their investment firm, and they vote and make a decision, and they're moving to a framework where this outside investment firm has the discretionary authority to make some of these changes without getting a vote from the committee, they say, what are we supposed to do? Your quarterly meeting is still a very important function, and your function then shifts from making decisions about the portfolio to monitoring the activities of these prudent experts. And last but not least, number seven, as I said, is loyalty, right? So those are your fiduciary duties and the guidelines for discharging them properly.
Great. Well, any questions on that as kind of a quick overview of your fiduciary responsibilities? Okay, everybody feels that everybody good fiduciary, we'll move on to investment service model. So this is getting the tougher choices here. So we had shown this earlier before you engaged us to help you through this process, and we're going to call them flavors, the different kind of flavors of investment advisory. And on the far left, you'll see non-discretionary consulting, and then a, you know, a big gap where you jump over to OCIO. So OCIO stands for outsourced chief investment officer. And so there's roughly three flavors of OCIO, and these are ones Alpha created. People have different spends on them, but these are basically the three that we feel like are the most prevalent in the industry. So left, on the far left is a non-discretionary consultant, and that's really where you have a consultant just comes in and gives you advice. Say, they say, okay, you need to add to your equity exposure. Here are three different managers committee. Here's all the research on them. You make that decision. And so it really puts a burden back on the investment committee in order to pick the managers. And knowing what we know about the group, I assume that is not what you guys want to do. You really want to hand it off to an OCIO. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
Yes, okay. So we're going to focus on, you know, jumping this gap over to OCIO and really get you comfortable with what an OCIO does and, you know, how big of an industry it now is. One of the things you'll see, the investment committee, that middle red is, and we have clients that have switched over to OCIO from non-discretionary to like, all right, what are we going to do now as an investment committee? And you still have the hardest job, which is the asset allocation. And all the studies show that, you know, 90-plus percent of the return is driven by really what asset classes you're in, not by which managers you select inside of those asset classes. So nothing changes on any model that you're in. You have this investment policy statement. You're going to work with your OCIO to create this. It looks at risk and return, and different asset classes, and they're going to get you educated on, you know, alternative investments. If you want to do private equity and some of the different kind of racyer asset classes and just pure public equities. But no matter what model you choose, you still have the toughest and most important job, which is, you know, the asset allocation, which is codified inside of your IPS. Does that make sense? The fees are a little higher in OCIO. That's come down quite a bit. We used to see almost sometimes double the fees for non-discretionary and sometimes even triple to do OCIO, because they are taking more responsibility. They're doing this, you know, turnkey solution. They're filling out all the paperwork. They're moving the money to the different managers. Where non-discretionary, you still have to fill out all the paperwork for every manager. You still have to move the managers, reconcile trades and things like that. And so OCIO is why, especially, you know, groups like yourself that are voluntary members that are meeting typically quarterly, want to go OCIO, and really it's really more of a shared fiduciary responsibility in an OCIO model. So there's really three main flavors. A custom OCIO and hybrid are really roughly the same meaning. That in a hybrid, it really affects them if you do alternative investments like private equity, where they will have commingled vehicles, where they really, they're kind of, they call them access vehicles or building blocks. So that way they can, no matter what the client size is, they have the ability to invest in, say, a diversified private equity basket of managers. And there's no extra layer of fees or anything like that. It's really for scale and their abilities for clients to have, you know, access to the same managers, even if you're a $50 million client or you're a $500 million client. So that's what the difference between custom and really hybrid is. A one-fund OCIO is where you buy one fund, and there's about four or five of them out there. They mainly came from the endowment world. There's a group on the West Coast called McKenna, which are all the Stanford endowment. They're all created kind of in the early 2000s. And Global Endowment Management is the folks I used to work with at the Duke Endowment, or several of them. They're based out of Charlotte. And then there's, Wake Forest has one called Verger, and University of Richmond has one called Spider. And what you do is you buy one limited partnership, and it looks like an endowment. It's going to be heavily in, you know, private investments, probably 30% to 50% in privates. And so it's very illiquid. It's very, you know, for a very long time run. Typically, just nonprofits. So I don't think it's a really good fit for you guys. I think probably the hybrid OCIO, and that's where most of the different OCIOs, that their model is that hybrid OCIO would be the best fit for you. A custom OCIO is usually someone that's, you know, $300 to $500 million. They're mostly on everything in their name. We don't see a lot of people, there are not many OCIOs that really offer that anymore. Cambridge is one of them. But unless you're fairly large, it's hard to really pull off a custom OCIO. So we would think a hybrid OCIO makes the most sense for you all. Does that all make sense?
I think that all makes sense. You know, kind of when you were going through your presentation, I kind of drilled in on the hybrid column, because it sounds like what you're going to have there is an OCIO that's going to work directly with us based on whatever rules we're required to comply with and in accordance with the investment policy. But it also gives us opportunities to look at things like equities, fixed income, and alternative investments. Is that correct?
Yeah, you have complete control. You can say, okay, we don't want to do anything in alternatives. We want to do 70% equity, 30% fix. Where like a one-fund, you buy that portfolio and you get what everyone else gets. I mean, the thing about a one-fund is, you know, you buy, you're fully invested in all the different asset classes. So someone that's been there for 10 years will have the same performance you get once you get started in there. Some people like that. They can immediately create a, really an endowment. But you lose all transparency. You know, I read some of the trust agreements and all the history of the organization, and it sounds like, you know, there's a lot of constraints. This definitely would be, I think, a stretch for you all to do a one-fund.
So Brad, would the hybrid have as much access to the private equity and the alternative as the one-fund?
Yeah, they do. They're not as, you know, the one-funds are bigger. If you look at like a Goldman Endowment Management, they're $8 billion. And everyone, it's like you're investing in an $8 billion pool of money. And, you know, you're sitting here with maybe $60 million to get started. All of a sudden, you're, you know, you're like an $8 billion pool of money. But, you know, the hybrid OCIOs, they have really good access. They just have more clients, really. The one-funds typically have, you know, 20 or less clients, like a global endowment management.
Well, I know Jim has, I think, 47 clients right now, but...
Okay, 40.
Would the hybrid fit our corpus size? I know it will grow over time, but would we be a good fit for a hybrid OCIO at 51 million?
Without a doubt. That's the most common one. A one-fund is a little bit of a data model, because clients want to be able to control the risk. How much they have the different asset classes. A one-fund is the firm makes that decision for all the clients. Everyone's treated the same way. And so they evolved a little bit like a Jim, Goldman Endowment Management. The one that Anna thought about, Jim, is what they go by, is they have the ability to overweight certain sleeves. Problem with a one-fund, you can't get out of. They're very difficult to get out of. It may take five to 10 years, where a hybrid, you know, you have more flexibility in getting out. I mean, the private, you didn't decide to do private equity, you're still going to be held in those private investments, whether you buy that fund directly or use an access vehicle. So private is still going to be, you know, private equity is a five to 10-year holding period, potentially longer.
Hey Brad, this is Rick LaLance. For me at least, I think the one-fund is not even an option. I mean, I think that's not worth us spending a whole lot more time about, just in my opinion. But I'm still struggling a little bit with the difference between the custom and the hybrid. I mean, I can read what you put there, but there's a couple of things that sort of stand out to me I want to make sure of. So in a custom OCIO, are we not able to get alternatives there, or we are able to get alternatives there?
You are, but you will, they don't use pool vehicles. And so let's say you want to invest in some private equity fund that has a $5 or $10 million minimum, which a lot of good ones do, then you won't make that minimum, so you wouldn't be able to invest. Where a hybrid, they use access vehicles. They usually raise them annually, like their private, their 2023 private equity fund. And so, you know, they have very small minimums. And so you would have that whole pool of private equity. So custom is really for bigger pools of money that can handle bigger bite sizes. So you can, you know, put $5 million in a fund if you wanted to in one single, you know, middle-market buyout fund or private equity fund.
I mean, but if we're, I mean, if we're going to start out at 51 million, I guess, let's just use the smallest portion here. If we start out, we'll call it 50 million, and we want to be 20% in private equity, for example. I mean, that gives us, we could go out and get five different offerings at $2 million apiece. Without, I mean, why are you saying we don't have enough money to do it at 50 million? And of course, we're going to be at a lot more than that, when many, I mean, many of the private equity stuff, most of the private equity stuff I do has a million-dollar minimums. But if we get even, we could have five, you know, five offerings at $2 million to get to 10 total, which would be 20%, what's wrong with that thought process?
Well, I mean, the really good funds, that's probably going through some type of feeder vehicles that $2 million is a pretty low minimum. I mean, you could only have five funds, which is not, you know, at Duke, we had about 40, 45 funds, because you've got different asset classes. You've got, you know, real assets, venture capital, mezzanine, but different biosages, growth capital. I mean, you would have to pick only five investments. That would be a very concentrated portfolio.
Okay.
Five names.
And the one question that you might be able to answer better, but I'll kind of point to Adam Tucker, our attorney on this, just to make sure. Is there going to be any issue with us not holding title, which I assume is kind of like custoding the money? Or what is, I don't know that I, I feel like I should know what holds title to the investment means, but I don't think I fully understand that. What does that mean? Is that going to create any problems for us as it relates to our, what we are, what we have to do and how we have to own these things?
Yeah, it's, well, you're still going to have a limited partnership. Is that have been, so you'll own a limited partnership typically in the OCIO's name rather than that certain private equity firm's name. So you're still going to own a limited partnership. You'll still own title to that.
And that's in the hybrid?
That's in the hybrid, exactly.
Yeah, you know, I wrote this, and this is not meant to be a legal distinction, but essentially what we're saying is, so if you're in a hybrid OCIO, you, and let's say you buy a firm called Partners. You own the Partners internal fund of funds. And that, they're the general partner, you're the limited partner, and that vehicle owns all the underlying managers. You don't have title to the underlying managers directly, so you don't own KKR, Carlyle. This vehicle owns it. So we have clients that say, we want to own KKR, Blackstone, Carlyle, all in our own name. In this hybrid OCIO, you would have vehicles where your OCIO is the general partner. You don't go direct to these asset managers. Does that make a little bit more sense?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
It's really just, I mean, the hybrid is really just typically alternatives where they have high minimum vehicles that they're pooling client assets in order to have more buying power and build you a more diversified portfolio. You probably need 10, 15 names to have a diversified, you know, portfolio of privates.
So Brad, who are some examples, or Anna, of the hybrid OCIO? You've mentioned Cambridge at custom and several of the university, you know, initiated one-funds. But who are some of the common names in the hybrid space?
Well, they're really, I mean, in one-fund, there's four of those. And custom, there's only a few. They're still doing custom, so it's really everybody else. And there's about 100 names in the hybrid space. I'm sorry, about 100 names in all of OCIOs. So you have stretched, say, 15 names, you got 70 to 80 names.
So and Common Fund is a really well-known one. Huddle Callahan is one of the oldest. They've been doing that model for a really long time. SDI does that model. Russell does that model. So a lot of the biggest OCIOs are doing this. And again, you know, think about it from a business perspective. They like it because they build the manager roster, and then all of their clients are the same managers. So you're doing the customization work at the asset allocation, and then you can streamline the portfolio on the manager's side. So as Brad mentioned, you know, there's only a few firms that only do custom at this point. Almost everybody has started doing these access vehicles to really help them scale their OCIO practice.
So is this where all the banks are? Is this where Goldman and SunTrust and...
Oh, yeah. This is all they do, all they can do. And they're typically buying, well, Goldman would buy an internal fund of funds, but some of the banks would use external fund of funds for alternatives. They don't have in-house capabilities. But yeah, this would be Goldman, JP Morgan, all the banks. Just really, hybrid is the catch-all besides the two, you know, bookends. A one-fund and custom are really much more specialized than the hybrid. Everyone else is doing hybrid. And even Cambridge, who's, you know, one of the bigger firms out there, has created now its own access vehicle in the secondary market. And so buying, you know, slightly-used private vehicles that, you know, people want to get out of, you know, private sort of liquid. So there is a secondary market where you take a haircut anywhere from 10% to 50% in order to get liquidity. And so even Cambridge has started to create access vehicles. And they were kind of the last standout that didn't, you know, said they did. And they were kind of the last standout that didn't, you know, said they didn't want to have any type of quote fund of funds. It's typically what they're called, but they're internal fund of funds, not where they're buying third-party fund of funds.
Thank you.
So moving along, we won't go through all these. I'm gonna send you the presentation, you know, the strengths and considerations for each one. I know we already spent forty minutes on this part. So let's go through the OCO industry, kind of an overview. And so this really bifurcates the responsibility where, you know, what you guys are gonna be doing is, we talked about strategic asset allocation, working with your OCO, or the risk and liquidity and things to create these, this IPS, this investment guidelines. The OCO's responsibility is to implement that asset allocation. So you create this IPS that has targets, equity fixing alternatives, and then, you know, whether it's large cap, mid cap, I don't know how down you want to get to segregation of what, in the different asset classes. And you put typically a range of a lower and upper band, and that's their, really their roadmap. The IPS is what they live by. That's what their new share they have to follow that. They break those rules. They, they create a liability, a lot of liability for themselves. So you're gonna give them the roadmap and they're gonna implement it for you. And so, you know, really manager selection is really what the main thing they're doing is, you know, hiring and firing managers without having to get your approval every time they want to make a change. And that's really difficult, especially for groups that meet quarterly, who, you know, aren't in the market every day and watching what's going on. It's not meaning they're gonna be hiring and firing managers all the time. It just means they have the ability to do that without your approval.
And one of the biggest things in implementing an asset allocation is rebalancing. So, you know, if the stock market goes way up and you're overweight to your, your equity allocation, you break those bands, they can rebalance you. They can sell some of the equity, buy something else to bring you back into tolerance. So again, you're not, you know, approving all these trades. They're kind of managing it within your IPS constraints. So kind of doing a lot of the sausage making, if you will, that, that you then don't need to, to talk about and worry about and approve in your quarterly meetings.
Yeah, that's a great point, Anna. I mean, especially like a COVID example, when the, you know, wheels were coming off. We know a lot of those OCOs were just rebalancing, just, you know, selling fixed income and buying more equities. And most committees were terrified and didn't want to do anything. You know, they're, they're gonna stick by the IPS and they get out of these upper lower bands, so it will automatically rebalance for you. So let's talk about the OCO industry. You know, it used to be called, it was non-discretionary consulting that box on the left and just discretionary consulting. They put a much better name on it, outsourced chief investment officers. These are really your partners. And, you know, as we talk, we prefer firms that don't manage money in-house. We want someone that's out there just thinking about you all, who the best managers are in every asset class. A lot of times it is the people that work down the hall from them. And so we tend to focus on firms that, you know, are a completely open architecture. Not saying we wouldn't talk to a Goldman Sachs or JP Morgan or a local bank, but we prefer firms that are really scouring the, you know, the earth, looking for the best managers. But it's really grown quite a bit. This is actually gonna be a trillion. So at the end of two thousand twenty-one, it was almost a three trillion dollar industry. We haven't got the two thousand and twenty-two numbers yet, but it's over three trillion, growing at about a twenty percent clip. So it's been an amazing adoption to OCO. As I said, it's been around for a long time, but it's, it's really evolved. Here's what the client landscape looks like. And so on the left, you look at, you know, the size, and we're still seeing OCO kind of a five hundred million dollar and smaller, which is, you know, you guys got a ways to go to get there. But, you know, that south of a hundred million dollars where you are right now won't be there some year, you know, a few years down the road. But it's still the majority are, are smaller pools of money that are, you know, less than a hundred million dollars. By client types on the right, you know, you see that it really started with defined benefit pension funds. You know, as corporations, as their pension funds, back when there used to be defined benefit plans. Now it's almost everything is defined contribution, you know, 401Ks. But as they become more funded and they become more risk averse and they add more fixed income as their funding status gets to a hundred percent or a hundred, ten or so, where they, they can actually offload their pension fund to an insurance company, that's where OCO really got its foothold was in defined benefits. And it's since grown quite a bit. Nonprofit is now with twenty percent slice. It's probably a little bigger than that now. Healthcare, you know, we're doing two healthcare searches right now. Hospitals have been a little slow to move. And then kind of that other category is still a large, you know, large piece as well. Who doesn't, you know, and we're gonna show you some more numbers on this, but there's over a hundred firms doing, you know, doing it. Everyone has gotten into it. The banks, you know, the private wealth management firms, you know, the big consultants, like a Cambridge created an OCO division. So, you know, the Mercers of the world, Aon, the Willis Towers Watsons, the NAPCs have really pushed more into OCO. I mean, it's the holy grail for them because they have the ability to, you know, hire and fire managers and really kind of manage money more efficiently. And they get a charge, you know, typically a little bit higher fee as well. So, you know, they, they all love when their clients switch from non-discretionary to OCO. So there's been a big, you know, movement over to OCO. And then, you know, very crowded space now. A lot of the asset management managers, you know, the Bernstein's of the world are, you know, they can give you all their products, but they're gonna, you know, are certainly, you know, touting their new OCO capabilities. The big firms out there, these are all firms that are very fucking strong with pension funds. I would not see any of these firms in, in your search. And, you know, they're big. At your size, you'll get a lot of attention from them. The Mercers of the world, that's where I stole Anna from eleven years ago. They're three hundred and seventy billion just in the U.S. in total assets. They're fifteen trillions. You think about, some of these firms are in the trillions of dollars in assets and you're not gonna get any attention from them, which, you know, you, you've got a lot of work to go, you know, building this portfolio and a lot of, you know, education to go. And so we would see, you know, the, the big banks, WTW is Willis Towers Watson. Those are the big three are WTW, Aon and Mercer. So there's monster players. All right. Any questions about the OCO industry? All right, so evaluation factor. Here's your homework we gave you. Here's the eight factors. They're all incredibly important. As I said, we don't think they're, none of them are less important. We want the committee, you know, committees come from very diverse backgrounds. Some of people are not investment professionals. And so, you know, in a committee, you want everyone to get, you know, be heard. And so this is one way we found after doing some of these searches to kind of level set and get the committees on the same page together. As we said, all the names have been hidden to protect the innocent here. So you're, you're a number up here, no particular order. But as you can see, you know, number one is the most, you read it, the most important. So then we aggregated the score. And so, you know, the lower this total score, the more, the more important you think it is. And so you see the ranking, the ones through eight. There are no ties. We rarely see that. So you are, you beat group. You don't have anyone that thinks the same at all. And, you know, and I can just tell you, doing eighty of these, that you guys are like, most people, you think track record is the most important thing. I mean, obviously you're hiring an outsourced chief investment officer. And it's like hiring a coach. You want to be able, they can win. And so an OCO, you want to see, you know, they can manage money and hopefully be in the top half, if not top quartile of their, their peers. You know, one thing I did see was unique is relationship management. You know, and maybe it's a southern thing that, and we're all down the south and it's so important that, that you have a partner that you can trust. And you guys scored that really highly, which is something we will focus on. I mean, you know, a lot of these big firms that are more of a brand, you know, JP Morgan or, or all wonderful firms or Goldman Sachs, you see turnover and things like that. And so, you know, you guys feel like it's very important to have a team that, you know, that's gonna be with you and really feel like a partner. Investment philosophy and process, we always see that ring near the top. And there's a lot of us to see on that. Research, you know, alternatives. I know it's new to many of you. You know, sometimes we see alternatives higher. And so we'll focus on firms that are much more alternative, heavy type firms. And so here, it's kind of in a neutral, right in the middle at five. The firm, conflicts of interest, and ironically fees at the bottom, which, you know, it's funny. We, we see that quite a bit, that fees are six, seven or eight. And we're gonna give you this executive summary. Once we get all our RFPs, we're gonna build this thirty-page executive summary. And there's gonna be a page showing fees and a, and a page showing track records. And those are the first two pages everyone turns to. So we know that fees are important, even though you guys felt like they were not that important. Anything here that surprises you or anything you want to talk about, you know, from this homework? Trying to pick the people, you know, past performance is no indicator of future performance. So looking at track records can be a little bit of a loser's game. So, and, you know, we're gonna try our best to get real track records from these folks. It's very hard to get, as they will tell, most of them will tell you, every client's different, so we can't show you a consistent track record. But there's some things that are, are moving along with the industry to call GIPS, which some of the OCOs have GIPS compliant, which are more in a sense, obviously track records. So we'll give you a better feel on track records. And we have track, we've done eighty-plus searches, so we have everybody's track record in the industry. So we often monitor that, have a database of everyone's track records and see if there's any inconsistencies. And all of a sudden, their track record is gone from one of the worst we'd ever seen to one of the best. You know, we have to trust these firms. They are all SEC regulated. They won't give us, you know, fake numbers. But obviously that is certain. They will charity pick some track records as well. So that's something we have gotten pretty good at trying to figure out.
Yeah, Brad, I, I agree with kind of how we have it laid out there. It's fairly consistent with the things that I picked. And, you know, I think my number one was investment philosophy because, you know, it's good and in the same vein as relationship management, to work with a firm who's very thoughtful and, and has a consistent and a, and a well-thought-out approach to how they choose to invest going forward and, and, you know, having a lot of confidence in that. I sit in a lot of meetings where we discuss investment process and where to put assets and to, you know, whether we're talking about preservation of capital, liquidity and other things that are important. Think it's important that they just kind of keep those types of things at top of mind, specifically dealing with the type of, you know, funds and the things that the city wants to do with the funds that, that we have here. So, you know, it's very encouraging to see that we all appear to be on the same page there.
Yeah, like I said, we see that near the top. And that's, track records, very wishy-washy ones, when the track records we get that are not GIPS compliant. But investment philosophy and process is something we're gonna, you know, pull out of these RFPs and really make sure they're in alignment with what you all think because that is critical as we go through this process. All right, so we're right, getting right at an hour. The next steps would be for us to, you know, to, you know, we know groups that would sit well with, with you all. You know, we'd love to, we'd love to win committees. I think we've gotten about every group. We had, we had a foundation in New Orleans give us about twenty-five firms to look at. But we're open to any firms you think are great. We are glad to look into them. We've probably looked into them in the past. We're always happy to do it. You know, there's, I'm sure there's some great firms that you guys know. You sit on, as you said, you sit on other committees that you have great experiences with. So we'd love for you to give us names. You can send them directly to me if you'd like. But what we want to do is do two things. Build an RFP that really encompasses what you all are thinking as well as come up with, you know, six to eight candidates that these RFP would go to. We have committees say, oh, he's a friend of mine down the street. I understand he runs a great firm. Can you just send them an RFP? Our RFP will not be your friend anymore. RFP is over a hundred questions. It is brutal. It takes hundreds of hours to complete it. It has case studies in there. It's, it's not easy. And so if you think that they would compete, you know, some of the firms that we typically traffic in, which are, we feel like are some of the best in the country, then please submit them. But there is no courtesy out for RFP. But we'd love to hear any names. You can send it to us or bring them up now, however you'd like to do it. And we'll start building RFP, you know, this week for you all. And so kind of a dual process is to come up with, if we get too many names from, you know, so we've been handed long lists of names to go through. We'll run an RFI for, request for information and get into a lot of the, to, to the specs about, you know, are they really a private wealth management firm in disguise? You know, are they, most of their clients high net worth? Is their average client three million dollars, which we see is, it's not a fit for, you know, an institutional pool like you all. And so we can run an RFI and you guys are in no time constraint. You know, this is, as I said, the, the quick version, which is three to four months. This, this part, stretch out a little bit longer than two weeks. But that would be the next step is for us to build a RFP and for you guys to submit candidates that you think would be, you know, someone that would want to be, put their name in that.
So I have a question, Anna or Brad. As we move into this, does the fact that the city's coffers will continue, you know, this foundation will continue to grow over the next, what, thirteen more years? Does that put us in where we have some more unusual questions in the RFP than if we were just a fifty-one million dollar fund that was trying to, you know, last into perpetuity?
And that's a great question. Now that are case studies and, and I can't answer that specifically. You know, most of the people we deal with are going the other way and they're shrinking because they have a, you know, five or percent or higher spending or, or gifting or whatever it may be. Or they're, you know, they're treading water. So you guys are be growing at a healthy clip, no matter what the market does, pretty, you know, pretty much helping out like last year. But, you know, we have a more appropriate market. So, yeah, that's, that would be a great case study question. And so, you know, even some of these firms are using artificial intelligence now to tell us to fill out RFPs. And so that's one of the reasons we have case studies in here. I mean, usually our case, first case study is, here's your current investment policy statement. Please give us a review of that based on their asset allocation. Obviously, you don't have any of that. So that question's off the table. But we could put in, you know, put in here, here's, I know how much you have to, to spend each year, give it to the city and, and what would a, an asset allocation look like given these parameters? So that could be a case study question. Anything else that you have top of mind? But Anna's a great question there. We're very unique. And we can show a chart that shows how much is coming in each year and, and, you know, how this portfolio would evolve. Fifty million, you're still kind of small for alternatives. You know, maybe a little bit, where you can start, start off maybe a ten percent allocation to alternatives. But that's only five million dollars. It takes a while to build it. You know, private equity, as you do private equity, takes three to four years for them to draw the money. So it takes quite a while to build a private equity portfolio. So, you know, we'd love for, if you guys have any questions top of mind that you would like to ask each firm that you thought would be a good case study, would be, be great. I already have one. Anna, thank you.
So the municipality that y'all did the RFP for that was mentioned in your information, did they end up with a hybrid? Was there any, are there many municipalities doing this or are we unique in that way also?
I believe it was.
They were non-discretionary, so they had an advisor who was coming in and making recommendations and they stayed that way.
There were private bigger as well. I mean, non-discretionary is still kind of a, you know, four or five hundred million dollar type hurdle and a committee that wants to get into the weeds and pick managers. And then we started to see a staff where you have an internal CIO, kind of an eight hundred million to a billion. And that's someone, you know, obviously working just for you, which is the way you want to be. But it just takes a bigger pool of money to justify those costs to hire an internal CIO. So with that said, anything else you guys want to talk about? We're at a one-hour mark.
More members, you have anything else you want to discuss? Yeah, Brad, I think the only other thing I'll say was, first of all, really good presentation. Enjoyed it. Learned a lot from it. I know you're going to work to build the RFP. It sounds like you feel like you can have that done in about two weeks. Is that what I'm, if I'm looking at that correctly?
Really, you know, short or obviously we have a template. We've figured out every way to ask a question. Like, you know, our questions have multiple parts. And so, you know, really building the case studies is the thing that will be the most unique to you all. We could do it quicker if you need it.
Well, I'm just trying to, you know, I know here towards the end of the meeting, we're going to try to make a determination on when we want to meet again. So I just wanted to make sure I understood that that would be available within two weeks. I suppose we want to take a look at it before we meet again, if that's your process. And then the pre qualification for candidates, obviously you gave us an option to send you some folks if we know some firms that we think would be good candidates. But the ones that you're going to recommend, are you going to recommend those during the next meeting as well?
We, we will, yes.
Okay. And the types of things, you know, that I would probably be looking for is fairly obvious. You know, background, track record and all the different things you got in your, in the sheet we filled out for you, the evaluation factors and stuff like that. Is that kind of how you present them? You know, you'll give us a variety of different key performance indicators or whatever. It kind of tells us how they've performed over the last several years or whatnot.
Yeah, really more stats on their, the assets. You know, we like firms minimum or managing at least $5 billion that have a lot of institutions. You know, the majority of their clients are institutions. They have a deep staff. They've been, you know, in business for 10 plus years. So, you know, it's, it'll be more statistics like that.
And what, you're going to get the performance and things like that. But that's going to come at the end of the next phase, analyze and evaluate. Because we're going to gather that data for you all in the RFP and then present it kind of going through those evaluation criteria and walking you through each of the candidates in comparative fashion. So that'll be at the end of the bright blue analyze and evaluate phase.
Absolutely. Just so I'm clear, all I'm really thinking is just making sure we got enough information to make a determination as to who we think would be good candidates. That's all. That's all I'm really saying here.
Yeah, I was showing a client this today. Let me just show you something real quick. And pull it up on the screen real quick. So you know, one of the things we do is we run the Alpha National OCO indices. There's about 50 OCOs submit about, well, here's the number, 1,299 institutional accounts, their clients. And so this is for the first quarter of 2023. And this shows you a stacked chart of, you know, the, the last kind of seven time periods, quarter to date, year to date, one year, three year, five, seven and 10 years. And so if you just look at, I mean, I think when you search those clients, I think that there's some firm out there that's earning 5% or 6% more per year than everyone else. And so this is, you know, 50 firms submitting 1,300 clients. And this shows you the spread between the best and the worst. So this is the top quartile would be at 10 years at 6.7%. Can y'all see that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And then the bottom at 5.31%. So there's a 1.4% spread between somewhere in the bottom quartile and the top quartile. I think some clients think, you know, all these people are building broadly diversified portfolios. They're all, you know, pretty much fishing in the same pond in terms of managers are picking from. So you have, you have a lot of overlap. So, you know, it goes back to almost having relationship management as second, me or you. You really want somebody you can trust that's on your side. But you're not going to get a wild spread between, dispersion between, you know, these, these OCOs. So, because that makes, so track record is, is important, obviously. But, you know, if you do really badly, you pick a bad OCO, you may be, you know, 60, 70 basis points or 50 basis points behind per year. It's not going to be 5% or 6%, which I think some clients think that there's this huge spread between good and bad OCOs.
Want to raise a potential issue with the, the next steps that you had outlined in your presentation. And I'm going to thank Jennifer for pointing this out. It called for approval of the recommended candidates and of the RFP via email. To accept, to me, that sounds like a vote of a body. And to comply with the Open Meetings Act, that actually cannot be conducted via email. That vote would have to occur during a meeting, a physical meeting. So I don't think we, under Tennessee law, we could do that step via email. And that's, that may just be, you know, something specific that we just have to call another meeting, you know, sooner than a month from now.
That's fine.
Sounds like we need to meet in a couple of weeks.
First August sometime.
Brad, Anna, Richard Stone, I have a question for Adam and Craig, but for the benefit of you as well. And this is just going off of memory. I looked to see if we had our investment policy in here. If I recall, the investment policy we reviewed had some limitations on alternatives or private placements or something like that. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page when they go out and look for these OCOs that, that they know that there's limitations on our investment policy that are, I would say, maybe a little more conservative than some.
Really don't have one.
I would think that should be included in the, the RFP. I mean, it's a public document and it's relevant to the process.
Yeah.
Maybe that was our trust agreement.
Yeah.
For something, I remember the limitations that we had that will supersede an investment policy. If that's our, if that's our bylaws and trust agreement, it outlines what we can and can't do. And I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page before we spend any time and effort going out and looking at OCOs that may or may not comply with what we're doing.
There's, there's a, there's a couple statutes. The more relevant part is I think our trust requires consistency with TCRS in their investment policies. And so I can't remember if I've sent it to Brad or Anna, but I will if I, if I haven't already done that and highlight where it is in our, it's in the, I believe it's in the trust agreement.
Okay, that's what it is.
Says it in there. So we'll get that, we'll make sure they have that. I know that, I think I've sent you, Brad, Anna, the trust agreement.
Yep.
I can kind of highlight that section for you, so you can find that. And then I believe in something I gave to the board, I summarized what the TCRS statute says. So we'll forward that to them as well.
It more or less parallels the pruder investor standard. But there are some additional limitations for the Tennessee that are applicable to Tennessee consolidated retirement system.
They are. And if I remember right, reading through them, it wasn't too outstandingly restrictive. But it did have some limitations like you mentioned.
Yeah, Tennessee code annotated, I mean, for that specific pension plan, it is, it does offer diversified portfolio.
Yeah. And private equity, I believe.
Private equity alternatives, like he says, strategic lending, which falls under private equity is all included.
Yeah.
Might not be allowed to invest in crypto or something like that, but.
Cannabis.
Why are you coughing?
Well, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Tucker. And that's kind of what my expectation was, is that, you know, we'd have a, we'd look at the RFP candidates. We vote, we do the appropriate actions in the meeting, then we can move forward. So hopefully that's everybody's understanding. Hopefully that works for you, Brad and Anna.
Of course, yeah. Yeah, like I said, we're, we're here for, have our meetings and, you know, whatever you need. We're, more, people need more work sometimes, so we're good with that.
Excellent, thank you for your time. Does anyone else have any more questions for them before we let them continue on with their day? All right, here and now, thank you all so much for the excellent presentation.
Thanks, everyone, great to see you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, board members, hopefully that was insightful and helpful. And we look forward to working with them going forward. The next item we have on our agenda is item number four, the financial report. Earl, can you present that for us?
Passed out a updated financial which shows budget for FY '23 and FY '24, as well as the year to date FY '23 and '24. We are still working through final expenses for '23 as we wrap up the year end. We did get our Raymond James statements this morning. So I was able to get our interest to date in there. So you can see the revenues up at the top of that. We also last week got the installment payment for FY '24. So you can see that transfer in for the $10 million on FY '24 has been received. I am asking today for the board to go ahead and give me approval to transfer another $100,000 into our operating cash fund in Truist. We withheld $100,000 on that $10 million. The rest of it's been invested in a investment US Treasury that will be maturing in November to line up with the discussion we just had with Alpha Capital. The $100,000 should get us through our operating cash fund. In addition to the $97,000 that's sitting there, should get us through all of the expenses that we have budgeted until that December timeframe, when we would probably be revisiting your budget anyways in discussion with your OCIO and the contract fees and as well as anything else that we might be looking at with expenses and anything else that might be changing at that time.
So, Ms. Brown, just to make sure I'm clear, before I ask for a vote on this matter, we need an additional $100,000 to make sure that we have enough funds to cover operating expenses, which will be reevaluated in December 2023.
Yes, sir. So that should be the last cash ask until we get to December 2023. So it will just be the operating cash. So it will take our cash balance to $197,000.
So moved.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, that we allocate an additional $100,000 to cover expenses and at which time that will be reevaluated December 2023. If all board members approve this proposal or this motion, can you respond by saying approved?
Aye.
Those who don't approve? Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded and approved. Thank you so much.
Jennifer, I have one question about this.
Sure.
Jennifer, on the, on the transfers in and the transfers out, the net number that we are bringing in, is that, so you said that's our, you said our, kind of our installment payment has hit. Is that $7,680,000? Is that, is that what that?
That's the budget amount.
Is that on that schedule that we've had? I mean, was that the schedule that's in there? It seems like that's low for the, what would be the third.
So the installment payment that hit is the $10 million. So the budgeted amount that you see there, the $7 million, would be after February. So we've not done the $2 million transfer piece of that. That'll be in early '24. So once we do all of the analysis on, I believe it's December 31's value of what's in the accounts, we do the analysis of the 5% funding for the, what goes 85% back to the city and the 15% to the charitable organizations that the Committee on Contributions is determining.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the straight installment piece.
The straight installment piece is that $10 million line. So that last column on the right is the actuals for FY '24.
All right, so the 2.203874, the transfer to general fund, distribution of assets, how did that number come about?
It's the amount that's budgeted to be distributed to general fund in early '24 when we do our analysis and figure out the amount that will be distributed back.
It's a budget, so it's the estimated amount.
Yeah, so it hasn't happened and it won't happen until.
That's not the transfer to general fund out of the installment payment. You know, because some coming, because we did, you know, some of it was going straight to general fund.
This trust won't see that amount.
That's, I, I thought that that's what that number was. And I was going to say, I think it should be separate.
That's completely separate. That was handled out of the $17 million installment that we received.
I just want to make sure we didn't do it twice.
That's sitting in a completely separate Raymond James account. And it was a, this year it was 1.7 million that remained in that Raymond James account.
So the installments from MTE come to the city and then city retained 700, $7,250,000 and then the remainder of that went to.
That was for the other expense items that we, the kind of left half of the streets, parks, general.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, okay, good.
Change that label a little bit to bracelet, so it's not confusing.
Yeah, each, each year.
What it's for.
The trust gives 5%. 85% of that goes to the city, which is 4.24, 4.25% of total. The 2.2 is 4.25% of the projected end of the balance, 51.5 million. And then the other 75 basis points will go to the Committee for Charitable Contributions. That's where that 2.2 is.
Is that the, is that the 1.55?
The 1.55 is the payment for Craig's time, Adam's time, my time, my staff's time, Adam's staff's time, our admin staff, Karen's time, Angela Jackson's time, Sam Huddleston's time. So it's all the city staff time that is spent working on trust.
Yeah, that's cool. All right. So the 2.2 million then.
Premium rate the trust is getting for the work that the city is providing.
That's cheap.
The 2.2 is, is the percent that goes to the city out of the trust every year.
Yeah. So are we, do we account for the, the 15, basically the 15% of the distribution? Or is that inside that 2.2 million?
It's inside the 2.2.
So it wouldn't be four and a quarter.
It's, it's, I'm sorry, it's the 5%. It's 2.1.
That's what it's budgeted, so whatever the. Glasses, so I'm really trying to see this stuff the best I can.
You're still doing it.
The other part, the charitable distribution piece, wasn't budgeted for FY '24 because those payments won't start being made until July 1 of '24.
Yeah, I got it. There's 85 basis.
Which is the next fiscal year. Correct.
They might do the granting process in the early part of the year, but the checks won't go out till.
Correct.
So that's technically what, the third year of the trust, technically?
Yes.
Okay.
Third year.
Yeah, it'll be dispersed over the years, depending on what.
You'll see that budget show up next year when we go through the budgeting process.
Yeah.
Good question.
It's an estimate, because it'll be the actual balance. It'll be 5% of the actual balance at the end of the year will be the number. But it's an estimated number.
Best guess at what it is.
Pretty close guess.
Yeah, it's actually 4.277%. I was off by two basis.
Does that include the 10 million that we added or before the 10 million?
That includes the 10 million, because we're budgeting 2023, 24.
I just want to make sure we weren't double up. I knew that the two, I knew that the 2 million looked like the, the part that came straight to the general fund. I knew that was fairly close. And so I just want to make sure we weren't doubling that.
We are keeping it completely separate, Mr. LaLance.
No, I just want to make sure we get this.
7 million next year and, you know, it drops from there, if you remember, yeah.
Yeah, we don't get to 70 million until year sevenish, right? Some, the seventh installment, something like that, or eight?
20, 2030, 2030 to 17, 290 and change comes to directly to trust, yeah. But before that, the year before that's 250,000, so it's not huge.
So to follow up on Mr. LaLance's question, I know that we somewhat expeditiously approved the software for the Committee on Charitable Contributions so that we can receive grants, processes grants. Am I to believe that we're not distributing funds out of the trust until 2025? Since it's not on the budget?
Yeah, they'll, they'll.
Fiscal 2025, but the grant software is, they are in process of getting that contract in place and getting the software up and running so that they can get the contract, the applications in place for this fiscal year. Because they have to have the applications and they have to make the grant decisions this fiscal year so that they can actually distribute the money on July 1 of 2024, which is next fiscal year.
Yeah.
I got you.
July 1 of 2024 is FY '25.
Yeah, 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 okay. My impression was we were kind of pushing to get that software so that we could get grants out a lot quicker than that.
It took me like seven and a half years to finally get to the point where I'm like, okay, you're saying 2025, but it's in 2024?
Fiscal year-end that way. I just thought that we were going to be moving a lot quicker on the contribution side back into the community than even July of 2025.
It's the application software.
The city's budget's doing the FY24 contributions, so that'll be for this next year that started a few days ago.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
The grant application software, like, they can, you know, it's not overnight. There's a 10-week where your staff builds it to be custom.
Yeah, in my mind, I was thinking, I know we were trying to get that, we're gonna get that, and then we're gonna receive grants, and within, I was thinking, you know, by the end of this year, we'll be looking at doing contributions in January, February of '24, but we're not. Okay, that's what I was looking for.
But they'll be in process by the end.
They'll be in process, okay. Just trying to get my timelines now. Thank you.
Yeah, fiscal years can be confusing.
And we have the added complication of having the committee that selects the charitable entities, and then it comes to the board, and then it goes to council. So, it's the whole process that it has to go through as well as having the budget that has to get approved. With that whole process, there's added complications, so it's.
So, if we can make it bureaucratic, we will.
Let's have a public meeting and discuss it again. I appreciate the detail, thank you.
What other questions do we have on the financial report? I think we, you know, I think we took action and approved our action item regarding that.
Does this report need approved?
No, I just needed.
Assist information, yeah.
I just needed the approval for the $100,000 before I moved cash around.
Okay, so moving on to agenda item number five, approval of committee training request. Mr. Tyndall?
I want to spend some money. So, we have a couple of staff members that go to a training at an organization called Philanthropy Southeast. Philanthropy Southeast does a training that Ms. Davis is familiar with and is recommended, and it sounds really good. Information is in your, in your pocket here, packet rather, and Ms. Jackson and Ms. Lafferty will go down to get that training to be able to assist the committee. They're the ones that staff members will be working closely with, the Committee on Contributions. The training, hotel, trip down to Atlanta and back, about $2,500 for the members. So, we're just letting the council know, or council, let the board know that we'd like to expend those funds. It's covered in our budget, should be sufficient to handle that.
Do you need an approval?
Sure.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
It's been properly motioned and seconded for us to approve a committee training request down in Atlanta, Georgia. Looks like the amount that that training request is gonna be is about $2,300, if I'm looking at that correctly, from Ms. Karen Lafferty and Angela Jackson. Do we have any other questions regarding that before we put it up for a vote? Okay, hearing none, that all members of the board will approve this. Can you respond by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who oppose? Hearing none, it's been properly approved, and we get a lot of good information out of the train that's coming up. Thank you so much for bringing that up, Mr. Tyndall. Our next item is number six, other business. I think the only question I have is a question I've already, that I pretty much bring up at every board meeting, is is there any update on kind of what's going on with committee on contributions besides what we've already discussed?
We had scheduled a meeting for tomorrow, but since we're still working on the contract with Fundit, the software, there really wasn't any discussion. We postponed that meeting, and right now we're setting up a new meeting with them. And with that, when that meeting occurs, we get a good introduction to Fundit. I think staff will get training on how to set that up. We'll get some input that we need from the Committee on Contributions and what they want to see in the, in the software, what kind of information they want, and then build that out and set, it's about 10 weeks in the training, so maybe 10 to 14 weeks, I guess, to get it up in line. We're still trying to target fall, early winter timeframe to, is that right, Karen? Yeah, to get, bring it up live, trying to get some information out ahead of time. When it comes up live, we can start making grant requests and hit our timeline in January for, January '24 to make recommendations back to the board for contribution requests.
What other businesses is there? Anyone have any questions about the Committee on Contributions, any other business we want to bring up during today's meeting?
I've got a question. So, if we, does anybody in here have recommendations for the entities that they want Brad to search? Because if nobody does, it would make sense to me that we use this meeting opportunity to go ahead and vote on allowing them to, to start the search if possible, or is that something where people want to take time and then go through you, and then we gotta reconvene? What's the best way to go about that so we can use this time between now and the next time we meet that we're not just, you know, sending you emails and everybody's kind of wondering? Because, like, for me, I don't have any experience in that, so I'm not gonna have any recommendations, but some of you may have some firms that you would say, yeah, we want to include it, and can we, can we take action on that now and get that started? Or does that require a whole, do we need a whole meeting to discuss that?
To discuss recommendations?
Yeah.
No, if we need a meeting to discuss the recommendations, I think if I understood it right, the next, the next meeting, they're gonna build the RFP, and they're gathering a list of who it would go to. So, once we get the RFP from them that they've built, I think it can be distributed. And if there are any comments that the board might have, I can get them back to Brad. Once they have the RFP, then I, they'll either make a recommendation, or, well, they will make a recommendation who to send it to, and then they'll take any recommendations we have, and then those can go out. I don't know if we need any meetings in there, because there's not really any decisions in that.
I think the next step is around the questions. So, they'll come up with this draft, and then they'll share it with all of you, and so many of you are in the financial world. You may see a question that you'd like answered that's not there. You can add to the questions, and I think we all want to move forward as quickly as we can. I mean, they probably know the top eight that would be a perfect fit for us right now, so to your point, unless someone has someone they want to recommend, or say that we would prefer them not to be considered, that may be just a non-step for us.
What I'm hearing, and perhaps I was unclear, is earlier we were talking about having a meeting in two weeks per the schedule. Is your impression that that meeting was to recommend additional investment managers for them to review? And if that is the only reason we're meeting, I don't have any recommendations. But if there's another reason we're meeting?
That wasn't it.
It's all of the questions.
My interpretation was that it was twofold. One is that they would come up with a slate of pre-qualified candidates and that the board, they were seeking a vote from the board approving that slate of pre-qualified candidates, whether there were any additions or not, and then also approving the RFP. That was my understanding of it. Now, now, if you.
I thought any suggestions were supposed to be given ahead of time.
Yes, that's what, that was my interpretation.
Probably Craig, then he would give them more out.
We're not waiting on that. If anybody's got any, send them. But if not, in two weeks, we're gonna have an RFP that we would review.
Right.
And then we would also approve their slate of candidates, which may or may not include anybody that we submit. I agree, I don't have anybody submit, too.
Yeah, I kind of heard that when I, when I heard that earlier, and if that were all we were waiting on, there's no reason to have a meeting in two weeks, but it sounds like we need to review the RFP, plus what they're gonna present, which will be inclusive of any recommendations that we have.
So, that would be the meeting in two weeks. So, if we can set it up in two weeks. So, what, what I'll work with Brad is to get the RFP ahead of time so we can get it out to everyone prior to the meeting, and they have time to take a look at it.
Yep.
And a list, and we can come together.
Sorry, I thought you.
It's all right.
Would you follow up, too? If he sends that, the, what came, what we, what was the slideshow?
Mm-hmm.
So that we can, will you get that out to us electronically, too? Because that, having that timeline, that's what I was kind of went, started looking for, because I was, I thought I heard it a different way, but we don't have it, but that might be helpful for us anyway to kind of keep up with it when, you know, we walk out of here, and 10 days later, we're going, now, wait a minute, which was two weeks and which was four weeks?
Right.
A way we can have something to reference to get to that.
I'll get that.
Remember, we spent a good time on the questions in our process.
It would certainly be okay for them to send out the RFP to you in advance of the meeting, so you have the opportunity to review on it, review it before you sit down and.
He has a template for that, and that he thought he'd have that done in a week.
Yes.
And out of, out of just simplifying the complexities of this board's calendars, maybe good to go ahead and put down a timeline for the next five or six meetings. Let's get on, try to get on everybody's calendar, at least 90 days out, so that, I'm looking forward to this in a few minutes, trying to get everyone in this room on the calendar in two weeks, because everyone in this room books at least two weeks out, and it's gonna, it's gonna be fun, so I look forward to it.
You can base it on Brad's time.
So, to that point, maybe a 90-day, because he has a, they have a very rigid protocol, two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, those things. Perhaps we can just go ahead and email that out, say, here's what that looks like. Let's try to at least corral everyone's calendars for the next 90 days to at least get that on the agenda, to avoid those earnings calls that some people sitting on that side of the table will have to have in the next couple of days.
Yeah, so if we do, put our, put our meeting together for the next couple of weeks, and I'll have Brenda.
That'd be great.
Do for the next few months.
It might be, just that she may want to email with Brad or Anna and kind of say, hey, look, give us a suggestion. You know, they might even be able to give us a suggested timeframe of what makes sense and have them think about the kind of stuff that now they know we have to probably meet and vote maybe a couple of times more often than a corporate or, you know, a foundation, a typical foundation or whatever, so maybe they could just give us, hey, this would be really good times to meet, and if it's the next three or four meetings, it'll be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get a survey out.
You bet.
It'd likely be early August if you guys need me to be here, because I'll be out the last week of July anyway.
Last week of July?
Yeah, so we can, we can definitely pull that together, but just like you all said, that's, those expectations, Sean, is we're gonna review the RFP, they're gonna bring in some recommended candidates, and we need enough information to make an intelligent decision on who we want to go with, so, spot on.
I got one more quick question, other business-wise, before we get going. You want to follow up on something like that?
I was just gonna say, last week of July, so it's the week of July the 24th or the week of July 31st?
Uh, 24th.
Okay, so July the 31st or August the 7th, those two weeks?
I'll be out the 22nd through 29th of July and back. I should have said the last four weeks in July I'll be gone.
And I believe Mr. Flat has earnings call on August the 4th, so that week may be busy.
The 2nd and 3rd I'll be, it's a busy week, but yeah.
With Monday the 31st, you'd just be getting back in the office.
Go ahead and work.
Will you be?
Monday's always extremely difficult for me. I'll try, I would rather avoid them, but if, you know, if that's the only option we have, I would just ask that we start at 4:30.
I can do Tuesday, August 1st. I think that's.
I'm gonna go out on a limb. What about July 19th? That's a week and a half, but he said we'd have, we'd have the template in a week, didn't he?
I could do that.
That's a Wednesday, that's back to our kind of Wednesday.
I think, I think we could go back to him and say, here are two options, July 19th or August the 1st, and let's set that timeline from, from that date, assuming that works with everybody. I can do July 19th.
So, July 19th or August the 1st and see if they can hit that and get us a draft RFP beforehand. Okay, all right, we'll work with them on that.
If it works. I got one more just general question for the group, which is with me missing last meeting, and I really should have asked it with them, but I want to make, I didn't. Do we, have we gotten any kind of indication, and I, maybe, maybe I could just email them, but I'm trying to kind of get an idea of what they will tell us about what the different costs look like, kind of ish, you know? I don't, I don't need to know, is it 38 basis points versus 46 basis points, but I mean, some roundabout figure for those different categories up there. I mean, after we let them off the line, it kind of occurred to me that that slide was still up for a minute. We didn't even talk about what the difference in fees look like for those different categories, and I guess it struck me right at the end of the conversation, we were asking about the municipality, and that the municipality stayed over on the left-hand choice, and you know, I just, it sparked in my mind a little bit, a little train of thought of, you know, is that because it's 30 basis points for that option versus 130 basis points for the hybrid option or something? And I guess I should have just asked that, but is, would it be safer, or does it matter? I would like to share that with the group, but would that be better to come, would you mind maybe, or somebody, Jennifer, I mean, I'll do it. Can I shoot it back to one of you guys, and then y'all forward it out to everybody else?
Yeah.
So, I'm not replying to all?
Yep, we'll get that.
And that'd be an estimate, too, right? Because part of their job is that they do the negotiating.
Big, big time, yeah, just a big time range, and I mean.
It's like if there's a big material difference between.
Is there a big, yeah, and I guess I'm just trying to get that right in my mind earlier.
In my mind, I'm thinking the ONE fund is probably the least expensive, right? Because that ONE fund is just taking your money. You got nothing to do with what they do with it.
It might be, except it's got, you think, once y'all sent it.
And you made the point that it wasn't a fit, and Rick, you indicated it wasn't a fit, but I'm telling you, it takes forever to move your money, no matter which one you're with. We have done it, and it took us almost two years to get our money from the one who wasn't a ONE fund, and the more heavily invested in private equity and the hedges and the assets that make more money, hopefully, it just takes longer for those to wind down, so I was, I was curious about that. That was interesting to me. Because we're not in this to run in and run out of all these funds, it just takes too long.
It sounds like with the ONE fund, you're gonna have less liquidity option, which I believe we need a liquidity option.
Oh, no, there's a liquidity fund. There's an endowment fund and a liquidity fund.
And the ONE fund.
And you say how much you want to put in each fund.
Even in the ONE.
Because you've got to fund your operations.
Exactly. So, what I interpreted to the point you're making is the ONE fund is kind of, you know, you put this bucket of money here and it's managed however they choose to manage it. Hopefully, they'll still comply with the investment policy, but the one that he recommended seems like it's more actively managed, and we have a little bit more of that.
Well, even if the custom was free, I don't know that any of us want to sign up for the requirements that are part of that custom, where's that city in Charlotte? So, they may have staff that all they do is do that for the city anyway, so they're like, we're here, we might as well do it, but we all got different jobs and we got different things, but to your point, I think it'd be good to at least know a range of each one, just so we know.
The two, I was really surprised that he just bailed out on the custom one altogether, not, not the discretionary one, like, the discretionary, we don't want any part of that. I don't think this group would want any part of having to execute trades and.
Exactly.
Do that with a, with an, you know, an advisor, you know, someone who, like me, who, you know, I mean, just deal with that every time. But I was still thinking that the custom somehow would be, even though he sloughed it off pretty quickly, I thought that that would still be a possibility for us as we go towards, as this thing builds. I mean, you know, he kept saying, well, it's, you know, this is for people with 200 million. I'm thinking, well, we're gonna be at 200 million.
But he said 300 to 500 million.
Did he say 300? I thought he said 200.
And you're right, we'll be there in time, so who's interested in that?
Of course, we can change it.
Patience.
I was just kind of curious, the, what these fees are even starting to talk about. I mean, I, that's the bigger picture of this, and I, so I'll shoot, or you, will you shoot an email? You want me to shoot an email?
I'll shoot him an email.
If he gives, even if, even if you just ask the hybrid, just. If he gives, even if, even if you just ask the hybrid, just so I've got my head around where we're headed.
Saying that they're, if they have a 300 to 500 million dollar endowment at a school and you have a question and they have a question, who are they going to call back first? I think there was some servicing, which doesn't mean that's right, but that was what I think he was saying. They're not going to be that interested in us.
I'd be surprised. I mean, you know, honestly, I'm surprised he said that. I mean, Goldman has people who go out and call on people like me for OCIO business.
They're calling on me.
I mean, they're calling, I mean, a soon-to-be 200 million dollar account seems like the number one team on the list. If they're calling me, there's, I mean, I don't mean about this, I mean about my work. So they're clearly, seems like they'd be on board for this. And he just was like, I mean, they're not even going to talk to you, which surprised me, but I don't know. I'm learning a little bit here too. I'm just trying to soak it all in. That's why I'm trying to get, if, I feel like I can look at the fees and get a little understanding of what it entails just by looking at the fees. You know, if one fee's way higher, you know, you're just going to get a lot more stuff for that.
It seemed like his point with Goldman and the other big ones was the individual, you know, I don't want to say handholding, but individual service that you would get out of the other ones compared to Goldman. You know, salesmen tell you all kinds of things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And once you get in there, it's like, well, don't call us, we'll call you when we think you need the money.
And the minimum.
Oh, they eye.
Yeah.
Invest in each fund, see if that would be a little steep for us.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
And then Goldman's going to want to put us in Goldman products, right?
Perhaps.
Yeah, the evil empire.
You know, I think to the point you all are making, you know, it would be good if he had some sort of presentation on costs and kind of what that may look like and that he can present to us and kind of what.
We don't want to get to the end of this decision and like, and then we're seeing the fees and go, all of a sudden.
Is there should be a cost component built into the RFP process. That's why I didn't ask that question specifically.
That's probably true. You're right. That's probably right.
And we'd be able to evaluate that accordingly, I would think.
This is, this is not any legal advice, but it's just an observation that I'm going to share with you all based on one of the presentation, one of the slides there and what you're talking about here. In your responses in terms of the highest ranking of criteria, fee was at the bottom. What that, as someone who's experienced putting RFPs together means, that if you put fee at the bottom, that that probably, when they put their RFP score sheet together, that's going to be the lowest percentage value of the scoring. So that's how that's going to, that's how that slide's going to translate. And if that's a more important issue to you all, you might want to, you might want to think about that. I'm not saying it's right or wrong.
But Sydney, that's a good point.
Tightened me up a little bit. That's why I'm asking a question.
I was, fee was number eight on my list and I can tell you why. I look at fee as built into performance. If you can bring me, if your alpha and beta's right and you bring me a 15% return and I'm paying you 3%, I'm okay with that, as long as the risk profile is there. But if you're bringing me 3% and charging me 5%, then fee becomes an issue, right? So I look, those questions overlapped in some ways. I don't want you undoing it. So some of those questions, I felt like overlapped and nullified each other, right? So I look at financial performance inclusive of the fee, so I kind of dismiss that fee. Fee is important.
Right.
Risk tolerance and performance inclusive of the fee are more important to me. So those answers in the aggregate were almost identical to my profile, but I look at it a little different than, yes, the fee doesn't matter to me because I look at it as included as part of performance.
That makes sense.
The other thing we'll gather, because it might be interesting, just at least in terms, is we have another fund that we, that we do manage. We have our own city pension fund and so we don't, we're not in TCRS, we have our own, is how we go about it. And I think we're on the left-hand side with the discretionary, where we have an advisor and we have a trust fund that executes the trades, because the pinnacle executes all the trades and such. But it'd be interesting to see what fees we have over here and performance we have as opposed to, because there are DBs that are in these, in these OCIOs, so we might learn something for the city. But we'll get that information too, because, you know, we'll see what the fees are on that.
What's the corpus there?
25 million.
How much?
25 million-ish.
That's about it, yeah. So it's not big.
No.
But if it's managed, it's better, maybe.
Now, Richard's opinion, and Rick's not going to hear this, but those treasuries we've got right now yielding over 5%, zero fees, are highly desirable. When you look at a 10-year performance that he showed of 6.7%.
Yeah. There was only a small, it was a one-point spread in the 10-year, but if you went to that one year where you had a lot of volatility in it, there's a three-point spread in there.
Yeah, but you know, that was for all risk classes too. So that, that's what, and actually, that makes the number much more compressed even because what you're talking about is you're talking about a 1.3 to 3% spread for all risk classes. That means you have a, somebody with a 30/70 mix.
Right.
You're comparing them to a 70/30 mix, right? So there's still only a 3% spread in all risk, which means these things are really going to be really compressed. The spreads on these things, that's just how it works when you talk about these kind of benchmarky things, which is why.
First, last year, everybody got crushed, no matter what you were in.
Well, I like alternatives, but I don't have any problem at all with the treasuries. As a matter of fact, I'm glad, I mean, you know, I was, get us wrapped up to do them quicker before I left. But the, I just, I just want, really, I mean, the main purpose of me asking a question about the fees was just so I can start to get my head around. I mean, at the end of the day, honestly, if he, I just don't want him to come back and all of a sudden say it's going to be 1.8% per year to manage this thing. I'm going to start saying, I don't, I'm not sure whether or not the OCIO is the right route because I can assure you that it can get done a lot, 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 lot cheaper with the same performance. I mean, listen, this is never going to happen, but I'll just tell you guys this for what it's worth. Mercer, the very number one group on the list up there, that's who gives asset allocation suggestions for all of the Raymond James models. I mean, so if you go out and buy, you got, you could go to anybody at Raymond James and get Mercer, right? Raymond James is going to buy a 100 million dollar sleeve of KKR and Blackstone and Silvergate and go down the list of the private equity offerings, which are, a person can go get a million dollars of instead of having to get two or five or whatever million they're talking about. So that's part of why I don't kind of understand, I mean, there are ways, there, if they're going to charge a lot for that, you know, look, it's never going to be me, it's never going to be somebody in the city, I hope. I don't, I mean, I don't want it to be local, somebody where we're having to deal with somebody's cousin and then every six weeks we're changing it because somebody else's cousin didn't. I don't mean you guys, I mean anybody's, you know, whatever. But there just may be a more efficient way if they come back and say it's going to be 180 basis points to manage it and it's all going to come out the same as what everybody else does. I don't know, I'm just, that's where my head's going with this in terms. If they come back and say it's going to be 60 or 80 basis points or something like that, that's, would be more in line with what I think we would expect from something like that. But I don't know, I just don't know what they're going at. So just letting y'all know kind of where my head was on that question. We'll have plenty of time to talk through it, but if you don't mind, pass that along to us. Now, we'll at least start getting in our brain right about that, or I will.
You bet.
All good points, Rick. And you both make good points about the market and how long are we going to have these high interest rates and that's where the philosophy comes in and all that, so. Yeah, hopefully, you know, when he makes the recommendation, that's another thing, Rick, is he's got some information in his database that tells us, this firm's likely to charge you about approximately this much based on the size of the investments you have, perhaps. We'll see.
There's got to be a reason why the OCIO space is just taking off like a rocket, right?
I'm sure, I feel certain, I feel certain it's going to be like what I said, the latter.
But you made some good points.
I mean, I feel, I mean, I feel certain it's going to be in the 50 to 90 basis points, we'll call it range. But frankly, as I was listening to him, I was thinking I should have asked two meetings ago to make sure we were starting to go down this road and paying somebody 50,000 bucks to suggest somebody to us that's at 180 basis points, if that's what it is, you know? But I don't think it'll be that. I just, I just wanted to kind of see it.
Yeah, I don't think fees coming in last for most of us means that we devalue them. Just meant on the eight factors that we have, that the other seven are a little more meaningful and the fees still need to be in line.
Sure. Right. Agree 100%.
Any other business, board members? Mr. Tindall, Ms. Brown?
I think we just might take a moment and just say that we miss Lee Moss today and that he's in our thoughts and prayers.
Absolutely.
Amen.
Absolutely. We definitely wish he, pray that he has a very speedy recovery. And thank you all for making me aware of that. Unfortunately, I didn't know he was dealing with a ailment until today. So, okay.